I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to all our guests, all those guys. Guys, I use as universal expression, women are including you guys in blue back there, Lions Club, welcome. You can sit down if you want, we're not going to make you stay.
Obviously they want to.
Or not. Or not.
We don't get to differ.
The board met in executive session before the start of tonight's meeting. We interviewed an Arthur Zabalski for, as a member or prospective member to the Telecommunications Advisory Board, and I'd like to make the motion that he be appointed.
Second, Ben.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also had some real estate matters to discuss, litigation matters to discuss as well. And first thing on the agenda under presentations is the Lions Club. Come on, guys, please.
Anyone want to talk about one?
You need to go to the microphone. So either that microphone, if it's easier to go to that one.
So you're on TV.
You're on TV.
I don't have to inhale. Bill, you get over here.
Does someone want to talk about this club in particular and this donation in particular, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Doylestown Lions Club has been in Doylestown since 1945. We were chartered in May of 1945. We've been a part of the community ever since. About, I think, Rick, four years ago, Karen Sweeney and Stephanie came to a meeting of our club. I had asked Lion, Rick, if there was anything that the club could do to help out with the township. And Karen came over to our meeting and we started discussing putting in a Braille trail at the time. Couple months later, there were some meetings, and what was starting out as a Braille trail then wound up as being a sensory enhancement trail to encompass all different types of handicaps. And our club pledged $10,000 to the project. I've been over to the pod, the pod for the visually impaired, which has three panels, which if you touch them, they make sounds and explain to people. So it was a great project. It was a long time coming, but it was a great project, and we were just happy to do it.
Thank you. And what is your position in the Lions?
I'm secretary.
And your name is?
Ed Losowski.
Well, thank you, Mr. Losowski.
Do we give it... What we're going to do... No, you can do the... You got the real check. We have a real check.
This is a check for pictures, but if we take the picture first, then I'll give the check.
Okay. All right. Then, well, the vice chairman of the board, Rick Colletto, is up there, so why don't you accept a check?
I can do that, but certainly...
Yep.
That'll be fine, too, since you're the figurehead, right, Warren?
Poor woman that's just got a cane, you're making her get up.
No, but she's basically...
It's fitting that Rick kind of helps with the check because he was...
You are welcome.
He was... We all appreciate your organization. The township appreciates this donation. The Century Trail is an amazing project. It's an amazing project! And I'm so grateful for this community involvement in this amazing project, so thank you. And this Century Trail is built, one station at a time, by organizations such as yours. So it's forever. This donation is forever.
Yes. There's five different pods in there at the present time, yes.
Thank you very much.
You want to hold the check?
I'm going to hold it.
The other one side, you have the big one.
Rick, you can hold the others.
No, you don't.
There you go.
And you are the inspiration.
Hold it one more time.
One more, one more time.
One more hold, one more pose.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Barbara and...
Barbara and Rick.
Pay to the order of...
Thanks, County. You're all welcome to stay for the riveting rest of this meeting.
We're actually going to take a picture over and show them the pod.
Very good.
Thank you. And the next item, our next presentation is to Ray Hendrick, who is our outgoing EAC chairman. Sadly, our resident botanist and ornithologist is leaving Doylestown and going to Delaware. It's a joyous occasion for Ray, but a sad one as well. I'm sure it's bittersweet, but it's certainly sad for us, but we're also very happy for you. So we have a special presentation, and Ken is going to make it. And I know you want to say a few words as well, I'm sure.
So Ray, you would come on up here?
Let Ken make his presentation, then you can say anything you want. Do you have any family with you here in the room?
No.
He does have family in Delaware.
They're in Kansas. They live in Kansas.
Delaware, southwest.
He'll be closer to family down there.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Last Tuesday, I attended the EAC meeting, and while I always, when I was, I was the liaison for EAC for a couple of years, when I first became supervisor, and it was certainly a privilege and an honor to work with Ray as he was chair of that EAC at that time. And I got to know Ray for the past couple of years, and it was last Tuesday I learned of his departure. And so we are very grateful for all the service he did, and hopefully Delaware and the lower taxes are going to suit you well, and the peach orchard you want to put in.
That's correct.
But just a couple of points about Ray. You may know he is a Delaware Valley grad, and he's very proud to be in the Delaware Valley University grad, so he's very, goes, still goes to football games and everything, everyone. As you've seen him in the paper, he's known as the Bluebird Guy. He has lived in the township for over 50 years. He got a phone call 22 years ago and asking about volunteering, and he's been doing it ever since. He's obviously, he was the chair of the EAC and the ornithologist for the township, has given countless bird walks throughout the township and Bucks County, has installed hundreds of bluebird boxes throughout the community, along the parkway, in all the parks, continuous... He knows where everyone is, and he knows what nested in it, too. Keeps accurate, very accurate records. He's been very active in the meadow restoration. You know, we used to mow a lot of the, all the lawn at one time, and now we've created meadows. And when you look at the effort that the EAC and Ray has put in to restore and build those meadows, it's quite, quite an accomplishment. He's aided in the creation of Native Garden in Central Park. He's assisted the township designation of the Tree City USA, very instrumental in that, and Birdtown, has hosted a number of EAC summits, which he just had one last Thursday. He encourages everyone to appreciate nature, and he will be greatly missed as he embarks on his new journey in life in Delaware. And one of the key things that I've gotten to know a lot about Ray over the past two years, he does a lot of stuff. He really gets his hands around it, and he goes and wants to make change. But the most amazing thing to me about Ray is how much he wants to share his knowledge. He wants to educate, he wants to teach, he wants everybody to really have a good grasp and appreciation for nature and birds and meadows and everything else. So thank you so much, Ray, for all your service. This is a print of...
Oh.
So this will go in your new house down in Delaware?
Perfect.
So, very good. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You have to use the microphone, and he'll come out and yell at you.
Well, I've attended so many meetings over the years, and last week, we had, as Ken just mentioned, the summit. And it's always a pleasure to get the EAC committees that come from Bucks and Montgomery County here to the township. And part of being the emcee during the program beside the speakers, I like to go around the room and ask what Upper Dublin, Warrington, Lower Midfield, what they're doing and how they're approaching the environmental issues. And after they get done, then we proceed to lay it on what we're up to. And after the program was over, several of them came up and said, "You know, Ray, Doylestown Township just sets that bar too high for us to ever get to." But the reason I wanted the opportunity this evening to come in and just to, and I thank you for that, is that nothing that Ken said that I did or anything else would not have been possible without this board, every one of you, Stephanie, Dick, Ed. As a matter of fact, Ed said, "Ray, when you get there, nobody's going to recognize you because you don't have a hat." So, I thought, "A hat."
Doylestown Township.
I don't have a township hat.
So you don't recognize you. I got a hat, Ed, yeah. But without your support, without your help, without your backing, nothing. When I got that phone call from John Carson 22 years ago, I've told this story before, and I'm going to repeat it again. He came over and he said, "Ray, I want you to be the ornithologist slash botanist. I want you to observe. I want you to document. I want you to report to the township what's going on in the environmental health for Doylestown Township." He said, "Now, just to make it clear, you're not going to get paid. You're going to do it all on your own time. Any criticism that comes our way, I'm dumping it on you. And any accolades that we get, we want them." So he said, "Do you want the job?" And I said, "Well, with that, I can't refuse." But as all good things have to come to an end, I'm leaving. Since you know, I've been, since Jan passed away five years ago, it's just too much for me, and I'm, I want to downsize the house but upsize the property. So I'm going to plant a peach orchard. I want to put some nice vegetables and plants. And you're all welcome, because I've got two bedrooms instead of four. So there's always going to be one available, as long as you let me know, and I'll send you home with some peaches. But I can't find the words to tell you how much pleasure coming into the township. And John is probably rolling in his grave, because I do get a cap once in a while, and I do have free coffee and a donut if it's lurking somewhere in the back. But I will miss you all very, very much. Thank you.
Were you going to go to the concert tomorrow night?
I absolutely will.
Billy Joel.
I need to dance one bit, but you're out of luck.
Yeah.
I will be impressed.
Billy Joel tomorrow night, Central Park. Okay, the pavilion at Furlong, there's a proposed stipulation.
If I may, by background, this project, of course, has been the subject of discussions in public at many meetings of the planning commission, the supervisors. It's just been continuing for many years, I think is a fair way of putting it. Not long ago, we were supervisors and public saw a plan that was to be, hopefully, the ultimate plan, that will be the development of the property, in order to provide some assurance to the township that what has been promised will be done, and also to provide some assurance to the developer that what the parties have reached will in fact occur. A stipulation's been prepared, and it's been reviewed by myself and the supervisors. It incorporates all the components of the agreement we've talked about in public, the effect of which will, upon approval by the court, will become a court order so that both parties can enforce the provision. So, Mr. Murphy, would you be so kind as to just add anything else you'd like to add to the discussion?
I think, I was surprised. I look back today. I guess the last time I was here to talk about the project publicly with you folks was back in April, so it's almost been three months ago. And as Jeff said, since that time, the stipulation that Jeff referred to has been circulated, commented upon, recirculated, commented upon, re-circulated and commented upon. And I think we're at a point now where I believe that we've been, and Jeff's been faithful to all the different comments that not only you've provided, but neighbors, planning commission, other staff members as well. So I think we are, as Jeff thinks, at a point where we believe the stipulation is ready for consideration by this board, and we are certainly prepared, and Mr. Grasso is prepared, to execute it when you guys are ready to do so as well. So we think we're at a point now where we can all feel confident moving forward. As I think you know, this is only the first step. We still have to fully engineer and resubmit the plan that is contemplated by the stipulation. It goes through the normal reviews by Mario, all your other folks, and then to the planning commission and back to this body again at some point in the future. So still got a long way to go and many more opportunities for people to comment on it, so that's where we are.
Okay. Comments from the board?
No. What's the next step? The motion would be to approve the stipulation and authorize me to execute it on the part of the township.
Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize the execution of the stipulation?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Moving down to any visitors, public comment. Got your hand up first.
Keith Peters, Steeplechase Drive. I don't want to jump the gun here, because I know it's on the agenda for Ken to do the building renovation update later on, but it seems like it's modified for a complete gut job to a renovation, and I don't think, there's a host of problems and issues with the current building that I'm concerned are going to be visited upon the township by doing renovation of the existing structure. So I don't think you can put, to roughly use analogy, pig on a lipstick and call it a beauty pageant winner, to renovate the current building. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other public comment? Okay. Announcements. We're next meeting Tuesday, July 19th at 7:00 p.m. We're going to be closed Monday, July 4th, 2016, for Independence Day. The Thompson Performing Arts Series continues with the River of Dreams Band, Billy Joel Tribute tomorrow at Central Park at 7:00 p.m. June 29th, the British Invasion Tribute. July 6th, movie Good Boy, starting at 8:30. July 10th is the Philly Party Band and Fireworks, starting at 7:30. The concert is followed by the fireworks at dusk, I guess, or at dark. And it's $5 a carload, so park opens at 6:00 p.m. The rain date for that concert is the 17th of July. And then finally, the July 13th concert is the Fabulous Grease Band. Okay, next item, 2016 discount... Oh, no, that's not. We got one other announcement. I beg your pardon. 2016 discount park tickets are now available. To purchase your ticket, please contact the administration offices. All right. Minutes approval for the regular meeting of June 7th, 2016. I'd like to, just before we start, note that for the minutes that this meeting was chaired by Vice Chairman Rick Colletto. Please. All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have one other question. On page two, the second to the last sentence before announcements. It starts upon a question from Mr. Snyder. Ms. Mason explained, "To order new green tubing will have a total cost of $600. With the grant as it's matched, the costs will be covered by the township. Mrs. Lyons denied the order indicating the money will have to be covered by the taxpayers." Now, I don't think that that's how this all went down. I don't know what denying the order is. So what I recall, and you guys can correct me, is that we agreed to buy new green tubing and that they would be subbed out for the white, and then you would, then use those white tubings down the road.
Yes, and that's what we've done.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, and that's what we've done.
So now I would like the minutes to reflect that that's the action that, or that's the agreement that we undertook or came to that night, and then that, that last sentence be eliminated or removed. Does everyone agree with it?
Yes. Mr. Snyder amends his motion. I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion with the comment stipulated.
Thank you. All in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then approval of the budget work session notes for June 14th. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Comment?
No comments?
You didn't ask for any.
Oh, do you have any comments?
No.
Apologize. All right. Tabor property, I believe, is off the agenda?
Yes, there is a letter we received late this afternoon indicating that they ask to be removed from this evening's agenda, and that their application for rezoning be put on hold for now, and they will be in touch with us in the near future.
Okay. Reports from the solicitor.
I have nothing to report that haven't Ray spoken about or will speak about later.
All right. Chief?
Yeah, there's a memo in your package regarding the request for promotion. In December of 2015, Sergeant Mark Wetmore retired from the police department, if you may recall. In the audience tonight, I have Officer Justin Noda-Franchesco. Officer Noda-Franchesco was appointed to the department in May of 2006, and has a bachelor's degree in administration of justice from Penn State University, and a master's degree in the administration of justice from Wilmington University. While employed at the police department, he's attended numerous leadership training courses to prepare himself to become a sergeant for the department. He's spent six months as an acting sergeant while under the supervision of Sergeant Wetmore prior to his retirement. I would recommend that the board of supervisors promote Officer Justin Noda-Franchesco effective at a swearing-in ceremony in your first meeting in July, which I...
He always leaves in July.
July 19th. Swearing him in on July 19th and effective at that point.
Well, as Director of Public Safety, I can hardly, you know, champion this recommendation and promotion, so I would make that motion that he be promoted to the rank of sergeant.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good job.
We look forward to the swearing-in. Bring everybody with you. We want to see the family.
And just, just one more notation to the board. I don't even know if I told Officer Noda-Franchesco this. I'm requesting that we do the ceremony at the very end, so that following the ceremony, we can participate in his congratulations.
Yes, that would be great. You okay with that?
It's going to have to be. Good luck. Can we excuse him since he's working tonight?
Your excuse unless you want to stand.
Get down on patrol. Come on, that's good. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sergeant Bate. Congratulate.
Congratulations. It's like a sitcom, Sergeant Bate.
Congratulations. Okay. Township engineer.
Yes, as the board knows, the 2016 road program was completed by J.D. Morrissey, and they have submitted their request for payment, along with all the other documentation required by the contract, and we would recommend that, that they be paid $833,751.86.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve the payment to Morrissey.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, engineer?
Yes. Following the board's policy, I presented a memo to attend the 102nd ICMA conference, which will be held in Kansas City, September 24th to the 28th. Costs for the conference, the flight and overnight stay is included for your reference. And of course, on Wednesday morning, general session is when I'll be officially inducted as the regional vice president from the Northeast onto the executive board.
Congratulations for that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve that, and again, congratulate Stephanie for her honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go, girl. All right. Supervisors. Ken, do you want to start with the update?
Sure. Are we doing slides or just...
Yeah, the back. We have magic from the back.
You're going to speak to it?
Yeah, let's speak to it.
Keith is going to speak to it.
Yeah, in your, in your packet, the first slide. Bottom coming, there she is.
There's no, there's no slides for lights to be turned on.
We don't have a, we don't have a...
There it is.
Here we go.
Magic. I told you, magic from the back.
Wow, how'd they do that?
Who's going to flip them for me?
They're going to flip them for you back there.
They're going to flip them for me, okay. So, yeah, go on to the, to the next one there. Just to kind of, I always like to level set. So what we, what we've been doing here is, as a lot of people know, the project meetings started back in 2014, where we went through space requirements, numerous scenarios, and resulted in different concepts. We've held public open houses to try to make sure the residents understood why we need to do renovations. We revised the project team back in November 2015 to focus on a very, on a very small group. And really, the intent was to challenge all the scenarios we looked at, and really question ourselves to make sure we were trying to come up with the best ideas. And obviously, we tried to incorporate as much, whatever resident feedback there was, we included that. Came back to the board February 2nd, 2016, took those best alternatives, and, and we believe that what we will be doing is satisfying not only today's requirements, but any of the long-term needs that we have going into the future. And now we're coming back to the board here on the 21st to review the last, because we just met with the architects last week. So this is fresh off the, off the press. When we look at the schematics of it, the top one there is labeled "south elevation," it's the front of the building. So it's hard to kind of distinguish, but on the right-hand side, you see an enclosed section. That's the police entrance. A little bit to the left of that, you'll see double doors, and that's the main entrance into the township building. And so you see some roof lines and kind of where we're, what we're trying to build here. And then the, the east elevation is looking at, if you remember, we flipped the police and the admin portions of the building. So the east elevation is looking at the police side of the facility, which is down where the parking lot is now. So you can see there's an entrance towards the left-hand part of the picture, then you have the Sally Port, then you have another entrance where they can release prisoners and stuff like that coming out of the back door. Next, please.
Yikes.
Yeah. Again, we won't go into detail here, but the bottom half of this schematic is all police. You see the meeting room right in the middle, that's the big empty space. And then on the top side is where the top left is code, then you get into finance, and you get into park and rec. So it's all laid out and flows really nice the way it's laid out here. And then there's an entrance on that top side for people, for the employees to come in to the building on that side. Then the police can come in their own entrance off to, off the back if they choose to. Next slide, please. In addition to renovating the building, we're also going to put up carports for the police cars. So this is just showing the 14, was it, carports? In the middle diagram, you'll see four at the left side that has like garage doors on. Those are large evidence storage rooms. So they will be secured, they will be, have some heat in them, there will be electric in them. So that's, that's because we have to move that out of the, the big building in the back. And then to the right of that... And then to the right of that are all the carports for the police cars. And those will all be open in the front and will be like a pole barn type of effect to it. And then at the bottom, you can see, looking at the ends, what kind of a roof line you would see on them. But again, that is to, if you're sitting here in this room, to the left side of the parking lot. Next, please. This is where today we have parking rec storage, and this is the area we down in the back in the big red building that we have to convert to the mechanical vehicle maintenance storage. So, the bottom right-hand corner, you see in the left-hand section of that diagram, is the big lifts for the trucks. Like in the middle towards the front, you know, there's another lift, and that's for the cars, but that's where all the vehicle maintenance is going to be done from now on. Next. The other component of this is what, because we needed to do a series of moves, and one of them is finding space for the activity room, which is today down above where the trucks are stored. We wanted to build, we came up with this concept to build a separate activity because activity building because of there was just too much going on in this space, so we needed to separate it to give it give it some elbow room. So the concept here is similar, a little bit bigger than what the activity room we have today, but the intent is to, if you look at the top right or top left, from the roof line, you'll see there also will be like an open-air pavilion there, so they can have picnic tables in there and there will be a kitchen in there, so if it ever comes to be where we have concession stands and stuff like that, it'll be available. But this, the intent is to put this down by the two soccer fields that were built down off of New Britton Road. That's where this is going to be located. Next, please. Now, as you go through these projects all the time, prices change, and when we had the concept or the bubble diagram concept, which the architects were estimating just on a square footage, these estimates they submitted, because now we're out of bubble diagrams, we're into architectural drawings, and they went to the project estimators, which is a much more formal, structured step. So, right now, the way this whole renovation is looking like, from what you've just seen, was 8.6 million, which does not include furniture and things like that, so it it will be more than this, but we feel that this is this is now a good number, we can start at least putting our our heads around it and what we're gonna do and how we're gonna fund it. Next. So, our next steps, keep going through and critiquing those architectural drawings, we think we're in good shape, but we want to make sure everybody's happy with them. Work with the Ways and Means Committee to make sure we're developing the funding scenarios and have our discussions on how we're gonna fund this and what the best alternatives are. We need to develop a project planning phase, phasing plan, because we have, we can't just close the building down, we've got to have space to move to, we've got to make room for the the maintenance space, so we're gonna have to stage this in in steps in order to get this whole thing done. So we need to come up with a good phasing plan, need to develop our architectural and engineering agreement, and obviously, we need to go through the planning commission and engineers and the planners on site to really make sure we're getting all our ducks in order. And then the last thing is to develop a schedule for the completion of the bidding and the construction documents. So we've kind of keeping, trying to keep this thing moving as fast as we can, but still a lot of work to do. Any questions?
Great job, Ken, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I'm here, I mean, Rick, do you have anything?
Yeah, Ed, would you put up my slides, please?
He's kidding.
I had the pleasure of going to a TAB meeting last week, and on the television channel from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, we we look at the content, and we try to minimize the amount of billboardings, where it's just that, you know, stuff going by that tells you, you know, bring your yard waste and those kinds of things. And as of last week, we have 78% active content, which means only 12% of our channel is, again, what they call billboards, which makes a big difference in the in the viewing of, as you've all have seen, our channels.
One more question. He's a fine guy.
We also, looking at the other municipalities in the area, we are by far way ahead with Twitter followers, 4,156, there's no municipality near us. With Facebook, 7,778, again, there's there's no one near us, so we're really out there, we're really getting it going.
How many likes or not?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I like, I guess you could say there are likes. We haven't had any bad responses, so I assume there are likes, so. Then we have the sewer committee, sewer board, and we are going to have the DEP come in on June 29th at 2:00 p.m. right here, and they're going to work with us and discuss with us how to update our 537 plan, what pieces, how to approach it, what changes we can make to make it an easier route instead of accomplishing the entire thing in one mouthful. And just to reiterate, also went to the DTMA, our water authority, and as you've read in the paper, our public water is clean, spotless, no PFOs's or PFOCs, or, so the public water you're getting from the DTMA is crystal clear. And that is, that's all I have. Other than the Century Trail, which I hope everybody takes a walk down there, it's really, really impressive, in the back off New Britton Road. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, you have something else, Ken?
No, yes, but I have questions for Rick.
Okay, make them easy.
On the, while the 13 wells for DTMA are clear, we buy water from other agencies, other water authorities, do we not?
We do.
Do we know if their water is clean?
They're supposed to be clean, they wouldn't be shipping it out to us. I don't know, answers your question, but.
Do we know if they have had the PFOAs or PFOs's tested in their wells?
I have not heard anything coming down the pipe that says otherwise. DEP assured us that our connections are clean, so that's face value maybe, but.
Yeah.
And passing it off to Dick, the DEP is extremely involved, and they're quite often giving us directives, so they're the lead authority in this.
DEP is now the lead authority. They've taken primacy in this case. It's really, to my knowledge, the first find of a contaminant like this that is outside of the U.S. government, so DEP being state has taken over.
Okay, so if if residents want to have their private wells tested, do we have information we can give them as to how they need to do that?
DEP sent out a brochure today, there's something on the table, if anyone would like one, stating that they are getting their program up and running. As they find some contaminant in private wells, they will obviously let all the property owners know what they're finding, and if you have a hit, they will provide bottled water until such time as fresh water can be made available some other way. They're looking, in our case, they're looking at an area, Duellstown Township, Plumstead Township, Buckingham Township, any place within the mile radius of our Cross Keys well. So they're beginning with, I believe, is early next week, they're going to be approaching daycare centers, nursing centers, anybody with immune problems to try to get them fresh water, get them tested, I'm sorry, get them tested first, and if need be, they provide fresh water. And then they will move on to private homes. And after that, if they need to, they will go to commercial establishments. So that's their game plan, they're putting that together. It it sounds simple, but it's not. There are only six testing labs in the whole United States, one happens to be in Lancaster County, so I suspect that most of our testing may go there, but they're negotiating for those contracts right now, for the testing, for the bottled water, and from there, whatever they find, we'll tell them what they're gonna need to do in the future, if anything.
And those affected private wells in Duellstown Township did receive a letter last week from us to go make sure their wells are tested.
Right, yeah, I was thinking more outside that circle that we sent it to, because looking at the DEP communication that Stephanie had sent us, there's an embedded file in there that talks about all the credited labs you could send it to. Is that where a private resident could pick one of those labs, and we can give that to the residents when they call and say, here, this, if you're gonna do this, this is a set of labs you could pick from?
That would probably be the best thing. Because they're certified to test for this.
Can we put that on a chart?
We can.
Yeah, let's do that. For water testing.
Yeah, just wanna make it available to everybody.
Here's some.
The suggestion, the suggestion there is that if you want to take that laboratory list, and you're looking for a particular chemical, check that list, call the lab, say, do you do these tests? Are you registered to do these tests?
Right.
Because they're not gonna do everything, they do certain things, and you have to check that out. Like I said, there's only six labs that do the PFOS, and you gotta hit those particular labs to get a sample of the perfluorocarbonated.
Should be very clear form.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, another question for for Rick or Stephanie, and this is around the Century Trail, that if I remember from last year, we said that, because we were looking for sponsors of building this thing, so we said, well, wait till we build it, we got the Lions Club, we got that money, and once we build it, then we can bring people in, and we can touch and feel it and see it, and so hopefully, we'll be able to sell more modules that way.
Absolutely. Plus, we have the grant, I mean, we have the grant, so that helped a lot to offset it in our match. But yeah, I mean, sponsorship of the pods is available, and we would be more than happy to go out and speak to any organization, if the board has any groups that you're affiliated with that you think, like the Lions Club, would be appropriate, we'd be happy to go speak to them, or any other residents have groups that we were available, and would encourage groups, especially if they have a special interest like the Lions Club with the visually impaired. Something similar to that, we'd be happy to speak to them on.
That's good, I mean, there are a lot of, a lot of us have contacts, and it's it's easy to have, easier to have.
Yeah, because you can see it.
Somebody, yeah.
All right, any else, Ken?
Nothing for Rick, but.
How did I do so far?
I had attended EAC on Tuesday, like I mentioned to you earlier, and the last comment I made is how I think it's so neat the way Ray loves to share his information, so it's not just about putting stuff in, it's how do you educate people. Those meadows, and these are just small mockups of the of the plaque that we're gonna put at the meadow, and explaining to people why meadows matter and what is a meadow. So it's not just about saving money so we don't have to cut the grass, it is about educating and teaching people, these are why we, these things are important, so thank Ray for continuing that effort. Ways and Means and the board supervisors had their first budget meeting last week, and I gotta say, there's there's a lot of information that the Ways and Means Committee and the staff, Ken Wallace and Stephanie and everybody is putting together. When you look at the packet of information and details that now are available to us, just not just on the budget, but looking at how we do road analysis now, it's much different than what we did a couple of years ago. Bike and hike, we have a five-year plan, looking at the compensation analysis, looking, comparing township employees to other townships, and where do we rank within them, and how we keep our bigger, larger plans, like comprehensive plan and things up to date, and doing them on a, revising them on an annual basis versus waiting 10 years to do a massive change. So, it's a lot of stuff going on, really good information, and I think it's really putting us in a good position to look at our finances as we move forward. So it's a good job by everybody, I mean, there's a lot of work to get that done. And I think that's it, that's all my notes.
Okay, Sean?
Yes, thank you. I'll just take the opportunity to, Ray, one more time, to thank Ray at this last week's EAC summit that he emceed, and it really was a great event. There was a lot of people involved while Ray spearheaded it, we had the whole EAC committee, special thank you to Autumn, to our speakers, Gene Ortiz and David Benner, and the different municipalities that came out, just a quick shout out to them, of course, Duellstown Township's EAC, Duellstown Borough, Newtown Borough, Middletown Township, Warrington, Solbury, Plumstead, New Britton Borough, Lower Marion, Buckingham and Ambler Borough. So we had 11 EACs in total. So I think it was a great event, I think it was a great, they brainstormed in that, and it was, what I heard is they wish we would do it more often, so hopefully that can happen. But again, thank you for everybody involved, and Ray, again, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, everybody. All right, unfinished business, there is none new business for Verizon Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement.
Yes, the board, in your packet, you have a proposal from Cohen and Associates for the Verizon financial franchise renewal for cable. We're proposing to work with the Bucks County Consortium, and that is the organization that we worked on the initial franchise agreement with Verizon. We have the price quote that the consortium received for them of $65,250. There are a number of municipalities that would be participating, our share is based on population would be $3,698. Through three years and and working with Comcast, we spent over $5,000. This was reviewed by the Telecommunications Advisory Board, and they do have the recommendation that we participate in the franchise renewal negotiation with the consortium. And you have a list of the participants at this point in time, and things are moving forward, so.
I do have two comments. One, please don't forget that we have an obligation under the Comcast agreement to provide most favored nation, so if you negotiate something different with Verizon, then you have to provide to Comcast, which is fine, but also you ought to provide for an opt-out if they're not accommodating what you need, and I talked to Ed, and Ed agrees with that, so I certainly think it makes sense to proceed on a group basis, but make sure that you can opt-out if it's not protecting your interests with respect to the Comcast agreement.
Last year, which one did we do, the Comcast? Does this replace that?
No, it's a different, different.
Different thing, okay.
Different contract.
All right, is there a motion to approve our participation to the tune of $3,698 in this franchise agreement consortium enterprise?
I'll make that motion that we join the consortium with the caveats that our solicitor gave us.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Anybody? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Lower State Road Trail System Amendment.
Mr. Kelso is here to talk about the proposal from Michael Baker and Associates.
Good evening. What we're asking, what we're requesting the board tonight is to increase the Baker contract by about $24,000. Right now, it's 82,000. And this contract covers the design of the trail from Duellstown Borough to Delval College along Lower State Road. The the need for that increase is tied to a lot of extra work we've asked of Baker, some of it they've already done, particularly on easements. There was also a number of redesigns that came out of work that SEPTA became involved in, where Baker had the path designed, and SEPTA asked for some redesign because of their needs at the railroad crossing. So there are quite a few things that increased the contract, increased the scope of their work over the past year, for the most part. And we also asked them to provide assistance during. And we also asked them to provide assistance during construction. Their original scope didn't include construction. The day-to-day construction review will be done by Penonee under a separate contract that's covered by, 100% by the grant, but we need assistance in just working through the mechanics of that, in terms of reviewing shop drawings, any changes, dealing with SEPTA, those types of things. As you recall, this project is funded, 100% of the construction is funded through a TAP grant, Transportation Alternatives Program grant, and the township's share is for design. And the design costs on this, with this increase, would take us up still less than 12% of the construction cost. And that's sort of a milestone we use in our business, in terms of what it takes to get a project designed and built from the design standpoint. So I think we're within that framework of normal expenditures for design on projects like this. And is there anything else, Stephanie, on that that I should add?
I don't think so. I think we have the funds and the budget for another project, which we went over at Budget Work Session, the Heritage Trail, and possibly pushing that off to be able to take care of some of the easements and the additional monies for the contract for Baker.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just one comment, that before any of the trail worker design and future projects for this year are contemplated to be put off, I'd like to come to the board and see if we do want to put it off, or if we can find the extra money to complete that also this year.
Well, I think the Heritage Trail, the discussion we had at the budget meeting was, I think there, and we had that same discussion today with the county at our bike and hike meeting this morning, is that we think there are a lot of opportunities for grants to extend that trail even further. And at the end of the day, spending less township money on that trail than what we anticipated. The county, as we discussed before, the county, it sounds like they're in a good position to get a grant to complete the Neshamene Greenway from the park down to, past Alms House Road, down to, pretty much pass there to the Neshamene complex there. We should hear about that soon. And then the Heritage Trail, the goal would be to extend that down and connect to it. So it makes it more attractive, the way we look at going after grants, when you can connect things. So I think it would be a win-win if we can do that. Spend less money, get more trail. But we won't know that probably for another year, as to what the disposition of that will be.
So if I'm interpreting this right now, we had $80,000 budgeted for this year, which we're...
For the Heritage Trail.
For the Heritage Trail. We're going to not spend that for what it was designed to be spent for.
Right.
We're going to, this, the lower state one's going to cost us $25,000 more, so that leaves us $55,000 in that original bucket of 80 that is still in the pot.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that work was being done, anticipated without any grants or matching. The long-term idea is to keep some of that money, to use it for match, for a future grant.
So the 55 that is sitting there, is that in one of the funds, or is that in the general fund? Where is that 55?
That would be sitting in capital, because it's a capital project.
Okay, sitting in the capital, okay. So that can't, in order for that to be used on another project, it has to come back here.
Yeah, right. And that's why we're here tonight, to get your approval to use some of that money, to transfer some of that into this account.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the additional $24,579.95 to the contract with Michael Baker on the Lower State Road Trail?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Tom, again. All right, next thing is the Chapman Road Bridge and the recommendation for the design and engineering, for post-design and engineering. It's recommended that Michael Baker International be given that contract, it's coming in as the lowest bidder, substantially lowest bidder, is there...
We were closely with Penonee. Matt Johnson from Penonee is here.
Hey, Matt.
I can give you a little bit of the update. I guess we've been talking about Chapman Road for about two years. We've invested some money in that structure to make some repairs to extend its life, but we knew that it was going to eventually have to be replaced. So earlier this year, we took the first step, working with the township, we put together requests for proposals with a detailed engineering scope for engineering design and post-design services, and we submitted that to seven firms. On, I guess it was May 20th, we received three proposals for that work, all from, they were all put together very well, they're all PennDOT-qualified firms for bridge design, they've done similar projects, their project managers were very competent, and they had done projects of similar size and scope. But Michael Baker was much lower in cost, and so the township staff and Penonee would recommend going with Michael Baker International.
Can you explain at all why the cost difference in the three? It seems so...
Yeah, it is a big cost difference. I mean, I guess the request tonight would be to move forward with Michael Baker and go into negotiations and bring some of that up, but they have committed to...
We don't want to pay more.
No, they've, well, negotiations, we have to enter in with a contract with them. And the scope was very clear, as far as what was required, and in their letter and in their scope, they agreed to all requirements of the proposal. I think they're looking at some, they had done some work in the township on some of the structures for the trails, as well as the SEPTA structure, that had some prefabricated structures, which would reduce the design cost. So we think that that may be where they're headed. But in any event, no matter where we head, if it ends up being a prefabricated structure, which is fine, it's, they're a little less maintenance and things like that, and they would serve their purpose well, give a good lifespan for them as a standard design would be. But the, whether they have to go with a standard design or not, the requirements of the proposal are pretty clear on replacing with a single-span bridge, meeting PennDOT requirements, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Just one other question. I noticed two of them had said it'd take 11 months just for the design.
Yes.
And the third one was 15.
Right.
Does it really take 11 months to design?
Well, there's different permitting agencies that are involved, there is a general permit that's required, it's a GP11 for this work, so we have to go to PA, DEP, and it takes them, you know, quite a time to review and things like that.
Look at just designs. Review. Little species and stuff.
Right, you've got to do all that, threatened endangered species, bob turtle habitat, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, we're looking at that type of timeframe. If we do go with a prefabricated structure, the construction time would probably be less than a standard construction, because they can prefabricate it, they can bring it in and things like that, so road closure would be less. But we'll be looking at all that through the design process.
All right, now, we'll entertain a motion to approve Michael Baker for this project, design project for Chapman Road.
Make that motion to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're to the President's Report for June 21st. Is there a motion to approve, please?
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for June 21st, 2016.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, next meeting of this board is July 19th at 7:00 PM. We're closed on Monday, July 4th, for Independence Day. The Thompson Performing Arts Series at Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park resumes tomorrow, June 22nd, with the River of Dreams Band, Billy Jolt tribute, and you will see Ray Hendrick out there dancing. June 29th, the British Invasion. July 6th, it's a movie, Good Boy, I think it's a dog movie, so it should be fun, it's for kids, for family, everybody, and starts at 8:30 PM. July 10th, the Philly Party Band and Fireworks, starts at 7:30, fireworks, of course, when it's completely dark. $5 per car, the park opens at 6:00 PM, the rain date is July 17th. And then, July 13th, is the Fabulous Grease Band. 2016 discount tickets are now available. To purchase your discount tickets, contact the administration offices. With no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. I think there are documents and checks to be signed. Good night, all.